Good evening, everyone. We call our meeting back to order at 6:30, 6:00 PM. Today is Tuesday, November 9th. Please join the wonderful Sharon Upfritz. Join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here this evening. Mark Elidge is out, so we have me. So we'll do the best we can. Sharon's going to help me out tonight. First, we have something. Agenda. Right? All right. Can I have a motion in a second, please, to approve tonight's agenda as stated?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. We also have a motion in a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. It includes those things listed in your agenda packet, recommendations for special education, personnel, some bidders, and a request to dispose of unservable textbooks.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no treasurer's report. And now we -- oh, special reports. We have all our guests. That goes to you for introductions. Dr. Putnam.
Yes. Hi. So we have a couple special reports this evening. First is the Penfield School District priorities and school action plans. And so in a moment, we'll have our building principals from all six buildings present. And then we'll turn it over to Mary Sapon, our CPSE chairperson, to talk a little bit about both an overview and update of universal pre-K for next school year is the hope. And I'll turn it over. I'll have the building principals, if you want to come on up. I think we've got chairs for everybody. I'm going to turn it over to Tasha Potter, our Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Access, who's going to do an introduction, a couple introduction slides first, and then we'll turn it over to our building principals. And while they are getting their seats, I will also just like to say thank you to some of our assistant principals in the audience who are here to support the principals. So thank you very much for being here. And I'll turn it over to Tasha. And then when we start the presentation, I'll have each of the principals introduce themselves by name and what building they represent. Again, thank you for being here. Yes, I can get you the clicker.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Putnam. We wanted to start again this evening by sharing our district commitments and priorities. As a result of our commitment to inspire, acknowledge, embrace, and celebrate the diversity that lives in our district, we have adopted the four principles of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. These will serve as our district priorities. This commitment demonstrates that we value the diversity that each individual offers our district. So with that, we wanted to share again this framework. As you see here, these four principles, this can be found in the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework document on page 12. And it represents the four commitments that we have adopted as the district. Welcoming and affirming environment, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and ongoing professional learning. The Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework helps our district community to create student-centered learning environments that affirm racial, linguistic, and cultural identities. It helps us to prepare students for rigor and independent learning. And it allows us to empower students as agents of social change. We wanted to also highlight that we have thoughtfully and strategically worked to ensure alignment between the district priorities and the work that's being done in our schools. As a district, we have developed an infrastructure that creates systems and structures that promote equity. All of our district instructional faculty and staff are participating monthly in new learning that's aligned with the CRS and restorative practices. We have established a district diversity, equity, and inclusion team, and so have each of our schools. We have also a district restorative practice team where we have each school, they've identified representatives to serve as members of their restorative practices implementation teams. And this work has really demonstrated how there is connectedness between the district priorities and the work that is being done in our schools. And so now I will turn the presentation over to our principals.
I am Marcy Ware. I am the building principal at Indian Landing Elementary, and I'm going to start off our elementary group. Thank you to Mr. Buddington for pointing out that this was right in front of me. As Tasha explained, much of what we're doing flows right from the district plans and the district priorities. One of the most important things we're doing is working to amplify parent voices and increasing parent engagement. At the core of that work is our DI committees that have been set up at each of the buildings. These buildings committees are focused on creating awareness, organizing special events, involving parents, and making sure that parents have a voice in what's happening within the school community. So they are really at the center of all that we are doing. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. McNair.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kelly McNair. I'm the principal at Cobble Elementary School. Another one of our district folk's eye is building community within our schools. So there's training for staff on the restorative practices and the implementation of circles in classrooms. So core teams, core restorative practices teams have been established in each of the buildings and are all participating in three days of peer training. That's in addition to the training that was provided back in 2019 to some of our staff members prior to COVID. We're also using circle protocols in our meetings, and teachers are beginning to use them and implement them in classrooms. While circles are an effective tool for restoration, circles are also used for building community within our school, our classroom, and our whole school community.
Good evening. I'm Scott Herschler, building principal at Scribner. In our third slide, we are focusing on adult learning and the opportunities and professional growth through faculty meetings, book clubs, our APPR process, as well as other PD offerings. And at each elementary building, we're offering many ways for staff and teachers to engage with learning related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Common presentations are taking place. We're co-presenting with those at district office and at the building level administratively. And we are consistent in that foundation for all four of our buildings.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Nelson, the principal at Harris Hill. I'm going to be talking about a new curriculum. And since I want to do, give a little bit of kudos to Dr. Maloney's office currently and Jim Pfeifer before. Those who have been around, curriculum has evolved over the years, and we feel really good about the curriculum that we have. But the time element is something that we're working on in the new integrated units. So Sheena Conway, Nicole Whitehead, Shane Waterson, these are the people that are on the front lines helping us in designing this with teachers. And so we've revised curriculum units to integrate not only language arts but social studies and science. What that does is it allows the teachers to fold that all together in learning opportunities for kids. And one of the things you've heard and will hear is time, time, time. It allows us to get some of that time back inside of the classroom. Also with that, we're able to fold in the social justice standards and some of the social emotional learning standards as well. So these are really good units. We're just starting to do them now. We're seeing them in action, and we're really excited to be able to support those. And even though I talked about it's three five currently, but you know we have already gone forward in K2 with some diverse texts and integrating that as well. There's still work to be done, and we're excited as building principals to support that work along with that team as we move the work forward. And now I think we're, each of us are going to take just a moment and highlight one aspect of the four points inside of our building. Marcy?
So one of the areas of focus at Indian Landing comes from our Project Lead, which is our DEI team, along with Partners in Learning, which is our shared decision-making team. Those two groups work hand in hand, looking at topics both Partners in Learning focuses on what we're doing in school with students to increase awareness and increase student voice. And then Project Lead, as I mentioned earlier, really is focusing on amplifying that parent voice. So at Indian Landing, we are dedicating our time and efforts into work with students every month, social and cultural awareness, and then also having parent opportunities at night. We have something coming up that will be open up to the whole district, but we're rethinking Thanksgiving with Perry Ground. He's a member of the Haudenosaunee Nation. That's coming up. So those are the type of things that our PTO and Project Lead are focusing on, to again, build awareness in the community and build opportunities for people to be involved.
So in terms of building community at Cobble, one of the things that we focused on is the social emotional wellbeing of our students. We've found that since COVID, since the pandemic took away many months of instruction and social interaction from our students, we found that building on the in-person human connections that take place in our schools between students and adults has been critical to building and deepening the relationships between students and faculty. So our master schedule has been designed to allow for this to happen on most days of the color cycle. There's a community building circle that takes place in the beginning of the school day. And students have the opportunity to build connections with their classmates as well as with their teachers in these informal yet structured conversations, which set the stage for the restorative conversations and restorative practices to be implemented.
And before I highlight something that's going on at Scribner, I just want to say, I think I speak for many of us that so proud of the work that's been done on a district and community level regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion and restorative practices. And the fact that we have all stakeholders involved in these efforts, and they are working in a synergistic manner, is really, really powerful. And we're just scraping the surface right now, but we've got wonderful opportunities in the future. So having said that, one of the highlights at Scribner is we've been in a book study using the Cultural Responsive Teaching and the Brain book by Zaretta Hammond. And we're focusing on the relationship between culture, cognition, and rigor, and opportunity and access for all students.
At Harris Hill, we had an audit done in the spring by Progression Partners. And from that, we had quite a bit to learn and to think about. One of the things that came from that was most pressing was really taking a look at our mission and vision. The district has a mission and vision, but Harris Hill developed a mission and vision consistent with that many years ago, and I was part of that work. So what we wanted to do was take a look at the mission and vision and incorporate this work into it. And not only, we're getting close to working some of the language, but more importantly, what we're talking about with the community, our DEI committee and our SDM committee, is not just creating a mission and vision, but how do you sustain it? And what are the next steps? So if it's just words on a wall, which I'll be very honest, it kind of has become words on a wall, how do we make it live? And so rolling it out is not just rolling it out, but implementing over time. So that's what we're working on right now at Harris Hill. Do we do questions now, Dr. Putnam? Or I?
I think we have it set as secondary two and then questions. That'll give the board a lot of time to think of very direct questions. Nice job.
Good evening. I'm Wynton Buddington, the principal of Bay Trail. To touch on a few of the points for what's happening at Bay Trail in these areas, we appreciate a lot of our collaboration with our colleagues. So we're working on increasing student voice. We've established a mosaics club this year at Bay Trail. And we've really appreciated the help of our high school colleagues, the high school mosaics club, in their guidance in helping establish that club and get that club going. Focusing on adult learning, Marcy Ware shared some ideas about how she's incorporated that opportunity for professional development with staff. And so we've taken that idea for our staff and identified a series of resources around DEI that we're sharing out with staff. And that's incorporated into our APPR process and our post-observation conversations with staff about how are they increasing their professional learning around focusing on the DEI work. With restorative practices and the trainings that have been provided for staff for restorative practices, we do have some staff that have had previous training, and they are using restorative circles in their classrooms. And so they're starting to serve as a model for other staff on what that can look like in the classroom as staff awareness increases through the trainings that are taking place. Our first round of our building restorative practice team, the first group just completed their third day of training today, and that work will continue throughout the year as we go through the year. In recognizing, celebrating students and building that caring environment, our PBIS team, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Team, has been working on recognizing positive behavior for students. So one of the areas where they did that was, we want students to wear their masks appropriately in school. It's part of taking care of yourselves, taking care of others. And so they had a system they came up with, they made some different sounds over the PA. Mrs. Stutz was very creative with some of those sounds with the committee. But they got students' attention. And when the sound went off for their grade level, if they were correctly wearing their mask at that time, the teachers would give them a raffle ticket. And then they could submit those raffle tickets for different prizes in their house offices. So recognizing, reinforcing the positive behaviors. They're also working on that for staff. They did a trunk or treat for staff to be able to stop outside, take a mask break outside, and have a piece of candy or a bag of chips, just something a little different to recognize staff and give staff another opportunity to connect. So our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Team is working for both staff and students on building that caring and that environment. I'll turn it over to Leanna.
Thank you. So Leanna Watt, principal at the high school. I just want to point out one commonality, I guess, among us as I'm listening, is that all of us are in a position to be able to really try to operationalize all of the district initiatives. That's really our role. That's our job in this work. And so I think although we're doing so with a lot of consistency, it's really great to hear the way that it's been personalized in each building to kind of match the building culture. So no different at the high school in that we're really trying to increase our student input, student voice. We've done so right out of the gate by incorporating a new student advisory committee, which is a large group of students, a really broad spectrum of students as well, different backgrounds, different interests, really trying to use some of the pre-existing committees that we have in the building, our DEI committee, which did exist, restorative practices and shared decision-making, and really trying to allow the DEI work in our building as it filters through the core group into our building committee, moving that to our student advisory committee to say, what are some of these brainstorm ideas that we can put into action immediately versus those that are really kind of long-term and require a little bit more planning and participation, maybe with other buildings and other leaders in the district? Aside from that, we're really trying to diversify those committees that have been in existence. So bringing in new members to those teams, trying to ensure that not the same people continue to raise their hands to participate in that work, and really bringing other staff members, other students, other parents into the fold to make sure that all of those stakeholders are really well represented across the board. We are really trying to pay close attention as well to our physical environment, so really focusing on the welcoming and affirming environment in our building. So everything from the entryway that students walk into, to the hallways, to the classrooms, ensuring that that is representative of the students who are today, currently, in our buildings, in each one of those classrooms. And if we're doing that right, that ought to really look different year to year if we're really trying to reflect the students who are sitting in front of us. So that means culturally, that means making sure student work is represented, student ownership of the classroom rules and policies are available and displayed for students to be able to see and have some ownership over. And then lastly, a big goal is increasing communication and being really consistent and transparent in that communication, not only with the community and our parents, but also with staff and with one another, and making sure that we are recognizing the moments when we maybe could have done it differently or done it better and taking some accountability there, but also really celebrating the moments when we're getting it right. And there are a lot of those moments. And so also focusing on, you know, the varying language needs that we have within our community and using the tools that we have in place, such as Propio and different translation services that allow us to access, you know, community members, families, who we need to have as part of our community and engaged fully. So I guess in conclusion, I would just sort of say, you know, one of the things that is really important is to be able to allow each one of our buildings to kind of continue to work together and to collaborate in this process and to, I guess, really continue to have the support of the parents and the community and district leadership to continue to move some of this work forward. And at the core of that, we are all trying to build systems and processes and structures that are not people-dependent. So it's not dependent on any one of us moving that work or any one of you moving that work. These are systems that we can put in place that will exist now and well into the future. Thank you.
Question time?
So now it's question time.
Now it's question time. Board members, questions, comments?
Barb?
Okay. So just help me, I apologize. Propio, what is that?
It's amazing. It is a translation device essentially that we have access to where you can, by phone, dial into a service that allows you to select a whole host of languages. You literally just type in the language that you need, and you're pretty immediately connected to somebody who can translate for you, not only if you have somebody in person who requires those services, but they can also connect you by phone. They can dial out for you and connect you. So if you're needing to make a parent phone call home to communicate, they're able to do both of those things. So when you are in the moment and really needing to be able to communicate effectively, it's readily available.
Oh, my gosh. That is fantastic. Thank you.
Well, I have a couple comments, really. First, I just want to thank you all for coming together because historically, we have done this presentation separately. And I just think, kudos to you all really for coming and really talking about, I love all these words, consistency and community building, all of them. I'm so excited. I'm really very excited because I think we, especially in the last year, have really been so focused on COVID and safety, and we needed to be. But it's really exciting to have you all here and really talking about amplifying student voices and the work that we're doing and moving work forward, even though we're in a pandemic. So I really appreciate you all being here and this presentation. Thank you.
You know I have comments, but I have six absolutely incredible principals who I'm honored to work with. I think Leanna mentioned it, is, you know, the district has a vision that we get from our school board, and we partner very closely with their school board and therefore our community. But then obviously, the work lands in buildings, and then how you put that into action with your staff and your students and your parents is just incredible. Lisa started to talk about some of those terms and just listening, both as a superintendent and as a parent, when I hear our principals talking about partnering with parents, helping each other, sharing ideas amongst the six of you, social emotional learning, celebrating and supporting students and staff, working hand in hand, increasing student voice, building human connection, building community, sustaining the excellence, and then that consistent transparency communication. And what's amazing, and I really want to make sure our community understands, is all of this is an "and," not an "or" when it comes to the regular things we think of school, which is that high academic rigor, academic excellence, preparing students for the world they're going to enter outside of Penfield. And all of this work is all in addition to those great things Penfield's always done. And so I just, I can't sing the praises enough of the work that you guys do. And you're doing that all. It's the first presentation in a long time where we didn't hear COVID, temperature checks, and everything else. But we know, and the reality and the board knows, that you're also dealing with all of that. And I just want to say thank you very, very much, and thanks to all of your staff, your assistant principals, and I appreciate, Mark mentioned, the directors and everybody else. It really is that team piece that I just can't say thank you enough. So again, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Can I just mention one more thing, just to piggyback on what you just said, Tom? One of the words nobody heard tonight also was initiatives. These are not initiatives. DEI and restorative practices are not initiatives. They are our way of being, and we are going to continue to learn and grow together to solidify this. It's not a race, it's a marathon, and each day, we're taking a step forward. But it's not an initiative. I think that's important to realize.
Thank you.
All right. That was our first of two wonderful special reports this evening. And we'll have Ms. Mary Sapon come on up, please. And our second special report is Pennsyl Central School District Universal Pre-K, something that I know Ms. Sapon is very excited to talk about.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Sapon. I'm the CPSE chairperson here in Penfield. I'm so happy to be here to discuss universal pre-K in Penfield. I'm very happy to really announce to everybody that Penfield is working on implementing universal pre-K in the 2022-2023 school year. We have a district-level team composed of Leslie Maloney, her administrative intern, Taylor Ramsey, and myself that are working on the implementation of universal pre-K throughout the course of this school year, getting ready to implement for next fall. New York State has provided us essentially with an allocation that they come up with through the Office of Early Learning and the governor's budget of 116 students to participate. And we get funding based on that amount of students that we have. All of our classes for universal pre-K will be at places called community-based organizations or CBOs. That's just a fancy term for what the Office of Early Learning talks about when they refer to daycares, places that are already OCFS-approved or Office of Family and Children Services, where they have already established full-day programs through childcare or preschool. And then lastly, we have put together, Leslie, myself, and Taylor, a stakeholder group that consists of parents, teachers, administration, and community expert representation as well. The purpose of that stakeholder group is to help gain insight from a variety of different people in our community, at the local and the school community, provide suggestions, and share concerns as we move throughout this school year in the development of universal pre-K. And then I'd like to share with you just a little bit of what we've accomplished in terms of our timeline, as well as where we're going throughout the rest of this school year for timely implementation in the fall. Taylor and I have worked on contacting a variety of different CBOs, community-based organizations, in our community in August and September of this school year. And we've also had our first stakeholder meeting with our group as well. We have recently visited a variety of different UPK programs that are already established in other districts, just to get some ideas of how they put together their UPK program, some ideas about curriculum, staffing, et cetera. Also in November, we'll have our second UPK stakeholder group meeting, and we'll develop and distribute something called an RFP, or Request for Proposals. What Request for Proposals are specifically for universal pre-K is just generating a Penfield-specific Request for Proposal Proposal to work with area, area CBOs. So these proposals will include information regarding the Penfield vision for UPK as well as requirements from the New York State Office of Early Learning for UPK classrooms and partnerships with, with area CBOs. So it's in some ways a contract, in some ways not, where we sort of outline, Penfield outlines, if you want to become a partnership CBO with us for Universal Pre-K, these are really the things that we're going to require that, that you do. And then also in December of 2021, right at the end, end of this year, we'll collaborate with our business office to finalize financials. Moving into December and January, we'll review the submitted RFPs that CBOs have sent back to us and select and finalize what CBOs will be working with. In January, we will have our third stakeholder group meeting and have a quick community presentation when our open enrollment begins, which will be in January and February. We'll hold a lottery because 116 students is not all of our eligible four-year-olds. So we'll have a lottery in January or February of 2022 and notify families following that lottery of them getting into our Universal Pre-K. In March of 2022, we'll determine the needs of the CBOs, what they might need in terms of curriculum, furniture, supplies, and have our fourth stakeholder meeting in March. After our fifth stakeholder meeting in, in April, we'll finalize supplies on our curriculum program, begin any hiring process that we can assist with through the CBOs, finalize details with the CBOs, and then get ready for full implementation in, in September. So with that, is there any questions that I can answer for anybody? Yes, Barb?
Yes, Barb. Just so very, very, very excited as, you know, that retired speech language pathologist, this just speaks to my heart. Question about the lottery, is, is it weighted at all?
No, we'll have an open enrollment where families will, and will be well advertised so that families will know exactly when the open enrollment opens and when it closes. And then we will, we'll put together a procedure for the lottery. So in terms of it being weighted, Barb, we will number all of the applications that we get and we'll just simply either pull them out of a hat or do a bingo sort of thing where it's completely random.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. I was, in terms of weight, I was wondering, like, children with, you know, special needs or will they also be included in this?
Absolutely, yeah. So students with special needs, students that don't, English isn't their first language, everybody has the same opportunity to apply and get in as anybody else would.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I do a follow-up question?
Sure.
Go ahead. So, I was really loud, sorry. If a child had special needs and was qualified for like early intervention services, would those children receive their services right at their UPK?
That's a great question. I can answer that question. So if the family, if, if the child currently had an IEP, which they may or may not have, right, at the time that they get into our, our Universal Pre-K, it would be up to their, to the district, which would also be me, to determine if it's appropriate to have the services pushed into the UPK or if a child needs a higher level of support, which would mean they go to a special school or a special classroom. But yes, if, if it was appropriate for the child to receive their special education services, they would and should receive them in our UPK classes.
Is it something that you see growing out? So like the first year it'll be 116 spots? And then the next year it's, there'll be more spots?
In terms of what we're allocated from New York State, I wish I could tell you the formula that New York State uses. I did call specifically and ask for that since I knew it would be a question tonight. And their answer of the Office of Early Learning said that they did not know and that the governor would be the person to ask for that information. So do, do I know if the number will increase year to year? I honestly don't, very sorry. I know that if, if Penfield wants to grow the program, that would be something that's up to, to you guys at, from the board level. But I think that, that you're right. I think a, a allocation goes out each year and it's based on a magical sort of formula that we'll, we'll never know. So there is the potential, I suppose, for that.
If you, if you don't mind, I'll just add in there too is, is one of the pieces, first of all, great questions. Our community will have many more, but this is a process which goes back to that timeline of learning and going through. But, but the answer, Mary did a nice job circling around. I disappointed you didn't call the governor directly to get the answer. I have found that's very difficult. But, but the allocation of 116, where that number comes from is that's the state aid, what, what they provide, how many students we can provide. So the, the district out of, out of its general fund could add additional spots, but that would be part of the budget conversation in terms of next year. So where we've kind of said is for this year, let's stick with what's allocated. That, that funding through foundation aid is allocated only for, for Universal Pre-K. We can't use that for something else. And if we don't have Universal Pre-K, we don't get those funds from the state. So we'll stick with the, the number we know we have and then sort of see how things go. And then it would be up to the, the board and the district to determine what that number is. But for every additional student, that would be coming out of our general fund, which then we all know what the budget means, what goes, what stays, and those are conversations. So at least for this year, the, the solid answer is, is we're sticking with the 116. And it's possible, we know from speaking with other districts have started, sometimes districts don't get to their full number because it's new and some parents might say, I'm keeping my child home. They don't have to go to school yet. I want to stay home with them. Others may love the program they're in and don't want to change it. And, and that's it. I was really hoping the weighted question would be different because just, you know, I will have a four-year-old, but it's a full lottery. And even if you're the superintendent, you just, they just get one ticket. So, but, but I think it's, it definitely is just something that I am, would, would just second what Barb said. I'm really excited for this. This is something that we've talked about, trying to figure it out. The state did provide a revenue source and, and I think it's, it's really exciting. So just, I know there might be other questions, but thank you, Mary, for your work. Because you've been talking about this as a, a district employee for a while and, and seeing what we could do. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, it's my pleasure.
Board members, any more questions? No? Thank you. I had a quick question. I was curious, and you might not got this for you in your planning, but do you have an idea of what oversight would look like when it's up and running?
Oversight in terms of supervision? You know, we haven't talked about that yet, but I would imagine that because we're using all CBO sites, that it would require a lot of supervision of those sites and, and frankly, probably weekly supervision of, of each site to make sure that everything goes off without a hitch, that the supervision, even though it may not be our staff, that we are closely aligned with what the CBO staff is doing, how the classrooms are running, how the curriculum is being implemented. There's so many things to monitor and supervise as well as to provide professional development to the, the CBOs and to make sure that they're feeling fully supported with the curriculum that we choose. So it, it would, it would take quite a bit of oversight.
Thank you.
Supervision, yeah?
I think that, I think we're good. I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Oh, sure. My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And then as we transition out of special reports, I will close my eyes and if Penfield staff members want to quietly leave, we totally understand it. You have had a long day today and I'm sure another long day tomorrow. So thank you so much again for the presentations and your support.
Thank you.
For the community, they're, they're more than welcome to stay, but, but I also have been there. So thank you. So that concludes special reports.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our student representative, Ms. Harvey. Good evening.
Hello. First, I would like to begin with just acknowledging how difficult the past week has been here at PHS due to the loss of our classmate. That has weighed very heavily on just the junior class in general and the entire school. But moving on, the Veterans Day is this Thursday, so students will enjoy a day off. And here at the high school, Chris Heron was a guest speaker and gave a moving presentation on drugs and alcohol and their effects on his life. The high school drama club is presenting its fall musical, Your Good Man Charlie Brown, starting November 18th and running through the 20th. Three more students were inducted into the National Honor Society. And in addition, NHS is sponsoring a clothing drive to benefit resettled refugees right here in Rochester. The robotics team hosted a public events for children at the Penfield Public Library where they read a fun robotics-related book to the kids and allowed the kids to interact and even drive the robot. Penfield's Model UN Club attended its first conference this year where Penfield actually won five awards. And moving on to sports, girls, girls swimming finished third at sectionals. Girls field hockey won their sectionals. And lastly, girls varsity soccer is advancing to states this weekend in Cortland after winning regionals last Saturday over Lancaster. At Bay Trail, the bookstore volunteers presented a donation to Bavona Child Advocacy Center and students participated in Jar Wars and raised a grand total of $1,302.98 for the Breast Cancer Coalition of Rochester. In fact, one sixth grader even donated $100. At the elementary schools, at Scribner in particular, Mrs. Robbins' class wished a Happy Diwali to all that celebrate. At Cobles, students dressed up for Halloween and had fun in music classes. At Indian Landing, the Halloween parade was, was a success. And third graders are playing table ball in PE. Finally, at Harris Hill, Ms. Ramsey's class used pumpkins to draw and paint their very own globes. Students are practicing gratitude for the month of November by adding two feathers that say what they're thankful for onto turkey drawings each day. So this will be fun to look at at the end of the month of November and be able to reflect on what we are thankful for each day. Second graders learned through a fun activity how water is strong enough to break rocks to help form sand. The PTA is helping students to put together a Veterans Day presentation. And finally, fifth graders are being trained on how to be safeties once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments?
I will say that my children participated in that presentation and they don't come home and say anything about much. And they both came home and were like, that was a really great presentation. So for me to hear about that, that's a big deal. So.
Okay, that's back to you, right, super reports?
Super ten reports. All right. So we have, I just have some student and staff honors and then a couple of Penfield Central School District updates and a little chat about our building emergency response plans. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. So we could take our show on the road here because you mentioned a young sixth grader who handed in a $100 bill and I have a picture to back that up. So Bay Trail participated in the friendly Jar Wars competition during the week of October 18th, 22nd in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as we know, students raised a little over $1,300 for Breast Cancer Coalition of Rochester. And there is a picture of a $100 bill going into that bucket. So I just think that's really cool. National Honor Society Fall Induction, congratulations to our PHS students who were inducted into the National Honor Society at the fall ceremony. It was held here at the high school. They did a great job celebrating. This is where students do get inducted in spring and then have an opportunity to get inducted in the fall as well. So smaller ceremony, but just, just a great event to start your morning with. So congratulations to those students. And I'm glad that Mrs. Watt didn't leave right away, although I gave her permission to go. But just a really cool Outstanding Educator Award. Just congratulations to our new high school principal, Leanna Watt, on being honored with a 2021 Outstanding Educator Award from the School Administrators Association of New York State. The Sanes Outstanding Educator Award is given annually to members who have made outstanding contributions in New York State schools. Leanna was first nominated for the award based on her leadership and commitment to students as an assistant principal in Fairport. And we are very, very happy that she's brought that passion to Penfield High School. So we do have her here. We give a round of applause to, to Ms. Watt. That'd be great. So funny story, she was driving to Albany, I think, with her family to celebrate in person to get this award and of course had to talk to me on the phone with some high school thing. So even going to celebrate, she's still working. I think somebody else was driving, so she was, was able to be on the phone. But thank you again for everything you've brought to, to our high school and our district. And then Bay Trail bookstore donation, Bay Trail teacher Jill Jones and her student bookstore volunteers recently donated $500 to Bavona Child Advocacy Center. And I'll shift a little bit from celebrations and for students and staff and talk a little bit about our, our updates. So I cannot wait until my first slide is not a COVID-19 update. As of today, we did talk about when we started school, believe it or not, 10 weeks ago, that at the 10-week mark, we provide an update. Hopefully, you know, we'd have new information. Well, as of this morning, there is still no changes to the New York State guidance slash requirement on masking and social distancing for schools. However, we are also hopeful because there is the COVID-19 vaccine now for children aged five to 11. And we do believe in, in nothing official, but that once time is given for our youngest students to opt into a vaccine, that that's where we may see some restrictions being lifted for schools. We do know that with all viruses, including if we look at last year, we will probably see an increase in numbers come Thanksgiving and, and the holiday. But we're really hopeful that as we look to next year in January, that we will see numbers back where, where we'd like to see them. And that vaccine, again, the school district will make that an offer. We will do the same thing we did for our students aged 12 and up, where we provide an evening or a Saturday where we have a vaccine clinic. But we also understand fully that this is a family decision. At this point, it's not a requirement. And we, we, as a reminder, when we talk about vaccines, the only, the only organization that can require for schools is, is New York State. So, so the district is not requiring a vaccine. But we are hopeful that as more younger students are vaccinated, that hopefully the, that social distancing and masking rules would change. And we're monitoring that closely and I'll keep the board updated, keep the community updated as we see things. However, we are continuing to work on, we've talked about last meeting, the opportunity for school districts to offer a rapid PCR test. And so we're working on those protocols. The start date for us being able to offer that would be after Thanksgiving recess. We do have the rapid PCR machines and the tests, but are required to be trained by the county before we can offer anything. And we're working through that process now. As a reminder, we reached out to the community and we had over 50 people respond interested to work per diem to do this because we can't put one more thing on our nurses during the school day. So we're going to be working on, on the system for this. And just as a reminder, this is for rapid PCR would be for students who get sent home with symptoms. In order to come back to school, per the regulations, they have to have a PCR test, not a rapid swab, but the, the PCR. So it's just, this rapid test takes about 30 minutes. It is a, a shallow nasal swab, not the one that touches your brain that I've had to had a couple of times, but much, much easier for our kids. And, and we're hopeful that that would help get our kids back in quicker. And so more information as we roll that out. That is an option for schools. Not all schools in Monroe County are going to be opting into the rapid PCR testing at their sites. We know of at least two now that were in early and piloted and they're seeing some success with getting kids back in earlier. A parent could still go to their physician's office, pediatrician's office to get the PCR test. But right now the turnaround time on those is longer than 30 minutes. And again, that would be for students sent home due to symptoms and that's the requirement. and that's a requirement by the New York State Department of Health. So, and we continue to update our district webpage with new COVID cases and information. Every Wednesday morning, we put up the cases from the week before. And so the last two Wednesdays, we've had a total of 10 active COVID cases. Our number tomorrow is going to be higher, much higher. So I think we're probably going to be looking at about 25 or 30 cases. And that is not new for anywhere in the county. We're seeing numbers go back up again, and so we're seeing that. But as of now, our classes are open. We're continuing to mask and distance and keep kids in school five days a week. And so that is what our continued hope and plan will be. So, more positive news. Special vote, just as a reminder, 2020, wait, the 2021 Transportation Facilities Project vote we have talked about at our past board meetings. It will be held Tuesday, December 14th. It will run from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Penfield High School gym where our typical annual May vote is. Applications for those who need an absentee ballot are available between the hours of 8:00 and 4:30, Monday through Friday, except holidays, from the district clerk in person at district office or by calling the district office district clerk at 585-249-5702. This information is also on our webpage underneath the Transportation Project site and also will be mailed out in our next prestige coming soon to a mailbox near you. And then a little bit about building emergency response plans. Building emergency response plans, just as a reminder, back in July 13th, the board approved the district emergency response plans, which is required every year. The district's also required to complete updated building-specific emergency response plans on a yearly basis and we submit those to the New York State Safe Schools. The plans must be formally adopted by the board as well. So Brandon Fox, who happens to be here and is our security preparedness manager, is, updates all of the plans every year. He meets with each building team to go over the details and any changes that are made. And then through an online process through the New York State Business Portal, we're required to update and submit specific information from our building emergency response plans. And this was required to be submitted by October 15th, 2021. So each of the buildings has updated their emergency response plans. Building emergency response teams and staff directories were changed. We have completed the information required on the New York State Business Portal and submitted as per their requirements. And we've also provided copies of the building emergency response plans to local law enforcement, Monroe County Sheriff's Office and the Brighton Police specifically. And our final requirement is a Board of Education adoption of the building emergency response plans. And that's what you'll see later in your agenda for hopeful board approval. That is it for my updates. I have some time here for questions and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments? No?
That has never happened, we're going to jump to Dr. Driffl.
Good evening, board. Just two quick updates from me this evening. The first is your consideration for adoption of the New York State Deferred Compensation Plan. So actually, I bring this forward to you in concert with Dr. Kenny's office. What this is, is a retirement savings option for our employees. The New York 457 Plan is authorized by the IRS. It's only available to state and local governments, so municipalities, school districts included. It works very similar to a 401K or a 403B. There are no costs for us to adopt the plan or administer the plan. All it does is just provide our employees an additional tax advantage savings opportunity for their retirement. It is authorized by the IRS, so it runs on the calendar tax year. So we'll have this as an option for employees if you support the adoption come January 1st, 2022. The other item for your consideration and approval this evening is the 2022-2023 Budget Development Calendar that I presented to you two meetings ago. The only modification from that original draft is to coincide with the board meeting, the change of date in December from the 14th to the 7th to accommodate the Capitol Project vote that will be taking place on December 14th from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM and here at the PHS Gymnasium. Other than that, there were no modifications. And that is it from me. Any questions on either of those two items?
Board members, questions?
Oh.
No?
Dan, I have a quick question. Is the deferred compensation plan, is that open for all employees or is it?
Yep, any Penfield employee, yep, correct.
Great, thank you. Alright, is that good?
Oh, that concludes superintendent reports.
I didn't think I was allowed to say that.
No, that's good. I needed that reminder.
Alright, board members, that brings us to facilities. Am I reading all this?
Okay, as presented, can I have a motion, please, and a second that we approve the building emergency response plans?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, I have to vote, right, sorry. Okay, we're good, sorry. Thank you. Financial items, we're going to adopt the New York State Deferred Compensation Plan as described by Dr. Driffl. This one? Okay. This resolution is detailed on your agenda. May I have a motion and a second that a board approve this plan?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion, please, and a second that the board approve the 2022-23 Budget Development Calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Alright, then we're moving on to item eight, which is several agenda items for the December 14th special meeting for the Capitol Project. The first item, may I have a motion and a second that a board approves Megan Doherty, is that correct?
Doherty.
Doherty Esquire as Chairperson of Election for the December 14th, 2021 special vote?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. The next item is Chief Election Inspector. May I have a motion and a second that the board approves Sharon Irkbitz as Chief Election Inspector for the December 14th, 2021 special vote?
So moved.
Second.
I guess you want her.
All those in favor? Alright, let's see. And then, what, we have one more. Our last one is inspectors and assistant clerk. May I have a motion and a second that a board approve the individual names as above listed as election inspectors and assistant clerks for the December 14th, 2021 special vote?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Alright, that brings us to visitor speaking time and we do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening. As always, the board encourages and appreciates comments. So please feel free to email us. You could also email Sharon Irkbitz and she can send some information on to us and written comments. And listed in the agenda and online is the way that you can sign up to speak if you wish to speak at our next meeting. That brings us to president's remarks. Our first agenda item is committee meetings and I think we only just had one so far, which is legislative. And Catherine, would you like to speak to that, please?
Sure. So Legislative Committee met on last Wednesday, the 3rd. And it was kind of a light meeting. Not too much occurred at this particular meeting because just how it's falling on the calendar. But we did cover a few things. Sherri Johnson, who's the president of the Monroe County School Board Association, was in touch with Congressman Morelli about the Tic Tac Devious Licks Challenge because so many schools were being affected by that. And so she reported back to us that Congressman Morelli sent a letter to the chief executive officer of Tic Tac. You know, not that we can control what's on Tic Tac, but that it's, we see it, we notice it, we don't approve. And, you know, we're watching, kind of thing. So Sherri Johnson shared that with the committee. Let's see. Now that the foundation aid lawsuit has been settled, Sherri Johnson is asking members of the Legislative Committee and school districts throughout the county what they want to focus on in future meetings with the legislators. I just want to kind of condense this for everybody. Prospects look good for the state to keep the promise to fully fund foundation aid in the next two years. But there is a predicted deficit in the upcoming next three to five years, which, you know, we go through this all the time. So, you know, they project a deficit which may or may not occur. And so if it does occur, then, you know, alterations may be made or indicated or whatever, but we take this step by step. And that was a discussion that we had. Sherri also shared a letter to the committee from Adam Bello. He is requesting input on spending the $144 million of the funding received by Monroe County from the American Rescue Plan Act. And so she's encouraging members of the committee and Adam Bello is encouraging members of the community, leaders and whatnot, for their suggestions. And so we had a brief discussion about that because that would not be a committee as a collective. It would be individuals who wanted to make suggestions and contributions to that. Fall meetings with legislators was pointed out because Assemblyman Josh Jensen talked to Gary Bracken about meeting with the Monroe County School Board Association members now that his first year in the assembly is complete. So those newbies have now gotten a year under their belt and they, some of them feel more comfortable. Some were comfortable right out of the gate, but others took their time to get to know their role and all of that. So the Legislative Committee meets with our legislators a couple of times a year. During COVID, we couldn't go to Albany. Appointments have been made with their local offices and we're finding that the Zoom meetings allow for more participation, especially because the lawmakers, with their schedules being so unpredictable, we're having more success with that. But we also, prior to COVID, we did a lot of advocacy with our legislators in their local offices. And some of the things that we are always discussing, we discussed it at the meeting, that we want to make sure our lawmakers understand. Some of them include the CDL shortages, or, you know, the bus driver shortages and the CDL requirements. We know that those requirements and mandates are exacerbating the shortages. And so that's a big one. Making sure the legislators know the critical nature of maintaining our expense-based aids. The food service staff shortages, the supply chain issues and the increased costs. I know that our legislators are aware of these things, but they see a much broader picture. And our role in this Legislative Committee as advocates and advocacy is to bring what is happening in the school districts to their attention. And they might be very well aware of it on the one hand, but then when it comes to schools, they're not so, you know, informed. And so that's what we do, we let them know. We need reimbursements for school lunches to increase and districts need a mechanism to get the federal assistance into their programs. So these are the things we were discussing. Minimum wage increases causing wage compression in the districts and money for COVID-19 testing should be excluded from foundation aid. New York State has this little habit of trying to include all sorts of things, you know, for allocated money that, oh, let's include this, let's include that. And then, you know, a lot of times districts have to scramble or services can't be met. So those are the things, I said we didn't accomplish much. I don't mean that we didn't accomplish much. It just seemed like sometimes we've got agendas that just like, wow, this is loaded. But the meeting the other day, those are the things we covered and discussed. And unless there's any questions, that's it.
Board members, questions? No, that's a lot, thank you so much.
Yeah, it is a lot, I know. It just seems so organized, like it just went along smoothly. But yeah, we did cover a lot.
Great, thank you. And then Emily, can you speak to the DEI Core Committee meeting? That was last week, too?
Yeah, it was last week, sure. So we were sent prior to the meeting a few documents for us to review. There's a discriminatory and harmful practices and language document and then a discriminatory and harmful language protocol, which in essence, it was just talking about language or terms that were used that could be offensive and then terms that could be used in place of those terms. And then just giving a history and explaining how those terms were derogatory and why it's important to use different terms. And then it just, I wanted to talk about, so there's a discriminatory and harmful language protocol, which is going to be distributed to each building, correct? Which I think is great because it's putting the ownership on everyone, you know, so that students don't feel that they need to speak up. You know, it empowers staff to also, you know, be supportive for the students if they hear something that shouldn't be said, you know, to just educate everyone. I think it's great that it's something that's being done. And then also, there was a presentation on one of the four principles of the culturally responsive and sustaining education framework, which was the welcoming and affirming environment and just talking about how that's being kind of rolled out in the high school, I believe it was, and how it can be transitioned into other buildings. And that is it.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Emily?
Alright.
That's good. So I don't think we have any unfinished business. Is there any new business tonight? No? So can I have a motion and a second to adjourn at 7:41? 7:41 PM?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?